All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call this meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, April 8th. I'm calling the meeting in order to order in honor of one of our fellow Regents, Ms. Libby Everett, who was inducted into the Daily Texan Hall of Fame by her alma mater, the University of Texas at Austin. And so we want to congratulate Libby for that.
Shall we sing "The Eyes of Texas"? No, not this time?
They recognized outstanding graduates from the University of Texas, who, and Libby is a former editor of the Daily Texan, and there have been...
I have to correct you.
Not an editor.
I was not an editor, sorry, but the journalist in me won't let you say that. But I was a reporter, so thank you very much.
A reporter for the Daily Texan. And there have been just shy of 85 people over the course of the offering of, or the recognition of the Hall of Fame. And some of her predecessors in this Hall of Fame include Liz Carpenter, Walter Cronkite, George Christian, Liz Smith, Senator Judith Zaffarini, Dave McKeely, Sam Keach, Mark McKinnon, and many others. And so congratulations, Libby. We didn't want that one to get stale, and we didn't have it in time to put onto our recognition. So with that, I'm going to call, roll of our Regents, Dr. Babaly, Regent Loeb, Regent Garza, Dr. Adami, Ms. Everett, Bill Kelly, and Mr. Krul. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Ms. Everett, would you join us in our, I mean, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And please join us as we read our Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams. We are streaming our live audio and video on the official Board of Regents meeting on our website, with the exception of portions, the meeting considered closed session by statute. Do we have anyone here for public comment? This is a time for people to comment on items not on our agenda. Seeing none, we are going to change up our agenda a little bit today, and I apologize. We do have a time, a time constraint today, and so the Board is going to immediately go into closed session in just a second, and then we'll come back and do our recognitions. And we will move action item number five from our regular agenda. That will take place immediately following our recognitions. So with that, I'm going to ask the Board to go into closed session under Section, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Legal Counsel, and Texas Government Code 551.074, Regarding Personnel Matters. And the time is 1:03 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, we're coming back from closed session at 1:34 PM. We do have an action item coming out of closed session. So is Dr. Babaly going to make that motion? There we go. You're going to make that motion, Dr. Babaly? I thought that's what we... Could you turn on your microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we affirm the designation and engagement of Paul Sinelli as litigation counsel in the pending contract matter as outlined by General Counsel in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Babaly. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Garza. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as red, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's move to, back to our recognitions. And so I'm going to invite Dr. John DeHalkum to come forward and introduce us to one of our many outstanding students.
Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia. Delmar College is proud to announce that student Isaiah Herrera is one of three winners selected from over 160 outstanding contest entries of the 2025 NISAD Student Essay Contest. This annual contest, run by the National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, also called NISAD, asked students to describe a faculty member, staff member, or administrator who encouraged them to persevere in their studies, finish a semester, or graduate from college, and describe how that encouragement helped him reach these goals. Isaiah is a freshman student at Delmar College, majoring in nurse education. He currently works as a Certified Nursing Assistant, is a Dean's List recipient, and serves as a Viking Vanguard Student Ambassador for the college. Isaiah's goal is to complete the EMT Paramedic Program, become a registered nurse, and work towards becoming a Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist. His passion for health care is rooted in a promise he made to his late grandmother, Aurora Flores-Padrón, and he is committed to serving others through compassion, leadership, and education. He is proud to represent Delmar College as a dedicated student. Isaiah was nominated, or nominated, that is, a Delmar College employee who he will identify when I bring him up here. He and the employee will receive $1,000. Isaiah's essay will be published on the NISAD website, and Delmar College will receive a complimentary 2025-2026 NISAD membership. So each year, they have this contest, and as I mentioned, he was one of, out of 163 winners out of 160. I'd like to have Isaiah come forward and let everyone know about his essay that he wrote and about the employee that he recognized. Isaiah, please come forward.
As she mentioned, I will be reading the essay at the International Conference on Teaching and Leadership Excellence in Austin, Texas, representing Delmar College, and it will be published on their website after the event. My name's Isaiah Herrera, and to be standing before the Board of Regents, the governing body of this remarkable institution, is truly surreal. Not because I never dreamed a moment like this would happen, but because I always did. I grew up right across Heritage Campus on 18th Street, watching students walk to class, wondering if I'd ever get the chance to be one of them one day. Today, I'm not just a student, I'm being recognized by the very institution I once looked up to with so much hope, and that's not something I take lightly. My path here wasn't easy. Life required me to grow up quickly, and there were times when my dreams had to be set aside, but I never let go of them completely. When I arrived at Delmar, I carried with me a quiet determination and a promise I made, one rooted in love, responsibility, and a faith in a better future. Delmar College gave me more than a second chance. It gave me direction, purpose, and a sense of belonging. I found people like Dr. Rivera, who saw my potential even when I was still learning to see it myself. The NISAD essay I wrote wasn't about accomplishments. It was about gratitude, it was about the power of education, the impact of opportunity, and the strength it takes to keep going. Today, I'm a Certified Nursing Assistant, a full-time student, and a Viking Vanguard Student Ambassador, and I'm committed to turning every roadblock into a stepping stone for success. I will continue to do everything I can to make Delmar College proud, not just in my grades, but how I show up for others, how I carry the values of this college, and how I use my story to lift someone else up. Because standing here today isn't just a personal victory, it's a reflection of what's possible when a student is given the chance to rise. And I promise, with all that I have, to keep rising and to help others rise too. Thank you to this institution, my professors, and closest to my heart, Dr. Rivera. This is an incredible honor, and I carry it with humility and with the belief that this is only the beginning. Thank you.
I'd like to also thank Dr. Leonard Rivera for paying so much attention when this student needed help here at the college. He's a wonderful example of what happens when we take time to work with our students. Dr. Rivera.
Board, I appreciate the recognition of Mr. Herrera. He did it all himself, obviously, but this is what we do at Delmar College. It's a great example of what our esteemed faculty and staff do each and every day. It's bring our students up, and Isaiah is just one of many examples, but I'm very, very proud of what he's done, what journey he has navigated to get to this point in his life. I've sat down with him, we've had countless conversations together, certainly proof that he's a gentleman of perseverance and deep loyalty, and that his commitment to his grandmother that he made to her before her passing, that he would pursue his education. And look at him now, he's going to pursue a profession in health care, and to me, that's just an example of what we do at Delmar. We transform lives each and every day. Thank you all so much, and again, more importantly, thanks to my fellow Delmar faculty and staff for doing what they do each and every day. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera, as you're going back to your seat, take that lovely picture. No, take that picture first. We just want to say thank you for bringing the story, your story, forward today. You are why we all do what we do. And thank you for, I thank you, Dr. Halkum and Dr. Rivera, for mentoring a student and bringing him forward so that we can, we can have that, have a little small touch of what you all have the opportunity to feel in touch every day. You know, John De, we love these stories. We love, we love our students, and we love the opportunity to see them thrive, so thank you so much. And I don't, I would have thought you were an English major by what you're reading and writing there, so I think you could potentially have writing in your future as well. Congratulations, sir. Next, we're going to bring forward Tammy McDonald, who's going to introduce a new member of our Police Department.
Thank you, Chair. I want to ask Captain Garcia and Chief White. On behalf of myself and Chief White, it is our pleasure to introduce you to the Delmar College Police Department Captain Nathan Garcia. Captain Garcia joined the Police Department in March. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, as well as a Masterpiece Officer's License. He's a basic instructor, he has a basic instructor certification, firearms instructor certification through TCO, or which is the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy, and he holds certifications in advanced accident investigation, advanced SWAT, and field training officer. Captain Garcia began his career with the DPS, Texas Department of Public Safety, in which he served for eight years. The last three, he served as a sergeant. After leaving DPS, Captain Garcia served as a police mentor in Afghanistan for 18 months, where he assisted in training of the Afghan National Police. After his completion of his overseas contract, he returned back to Texas, and he joined the Rockport Police Department in February of '09. He began working as a patrol officer, was promoted to lieutenant in 2012, and then he held a captain position there from March of '22 to March of '25. While at the Police Department for Rockport, he served in several capacities that include, like firearms training, unit supervisor, range master, armorer, training coordinator, field training officer, fleet manager, patrol lieutenant, criminal investigation, and he's attended Texas Police Chiefs Association Best Practices Management, Program Manager. So we look forward to his contributions to our Police Department. Please help me welcome Captain Garcia.
Say something?
I'm just, I'm just excited to be here, just to start another chapter in my career.
Welcome, Captain Garcia. We're glad to have you, and thank you so much for bringing him here today to introduce, to introduce him to us. Congratulations, thanks. All right, as I previously mentioned, because we have a couple of guests in the audience, we are going to move our regular agenda item number five up a little bit. And so Mr. Strabos is passing out some information, but we're going to have discussion and possible action related to the award of contract for the Delmar College Workforce Development Center in Aransas County.
Regents, Chair, President, thank you. We've, Delmar College has advertised a request for competitive seal proposals in accordance with procurement procedures. We have an evaluation criteria that's on the summary page I've just distributed, that includes relevant experience and capability, 15 points, proposed subcontractors for five points, quality assurance and warranty follow-up for another 15 points, past performance of related work for 15 points, past schedule record for five points, other capabilities and considerations for five points, and the price for another 40 points, for a total of 100 points. We have an evaluation committee that consists of Robert Duffy from Facilities, Janet Morris and Jeff Huddle, also from Facilities, and Herb Morrison from Architects, Turner Mears Architects. We received the pricing and ranked the proposals in accordance with the criteria. The number one ranked firm, Spad Last, number two Victory Building Team, and number three is B-Croft. I've got to type on that. It's B-Croft was the third team on the summary sheet. The scoring's correct. The scoring for Spad Last, 80.22 points, and they are the low bid. I worked with Spad Last, that we have some budget constraints, we'll talk about those, and work to get a best and final offer. Their cost proposal, $1,520,493. The funding for this project, coming from the Economic Development Administration grant, donations to the Delmar College Foundation, and a commitment from the Delmar College Foundation. And we've got a variety of supporters here. Mr. Jackson, I don't know if you'd like to come up and say a few words?
Well, I didn't expect to speak, folks, but on behalf of everyone in Aransas County, this has been a long, five-year journey to get to this point, and it's a very significant, pivotal threshold that we are crossing over today, and I just can't thank Delmar College enough for everything you've done, and in addition to that, the Delmar College Foundation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John, for being here. Do we have questions for Mr. Strabos on the proposal? Just to be clear, the donations to the Delmar College Foundation are currently in, that's in-house already, and then the Delmar College Foundation commitment would be additional fundraising commitment, some of which we have verbally, just not technically in the bank yet.
That is correct. I've confirmed this data with Matt.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? Did you have a comment, Matt?
Just on standby.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so staff is recommending that we award the contract to Spaglast in the amount of $1,520,493. No, not another number.
One million.
There we go. One million, I'm so sorry, $1,520,493. Let's read it correctly. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Dr. Adami. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loeb. Any discussion? Is there any additional public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Strabos, for bringing this back, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, and the, in Aransas County Economic Development folks, for your support in all of this. It's been very, very important for us. And I should say, I should recognize Sandra Alvarez, the chairman of the Delmar College Foundation, in the audience. Thank you for your, your commitment as well. Thank you for being here. Lots of applause.
If I can, Chair Scott, I also wanted to point out, Melody Nixon-Bice is also on our Delmar College Foundation Board, and she's also here, representing the foundation.
I apologize. There's a head between you and me, I didn't see you there. Thank you so much for being here. All right, so we will go back to our regular agenda now, and we're going to go into our college president's report. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very quick with my report. The month of March has proven to be another busy one during the legislative session, as you might imagine, starting with a joint meeting that I attended virtually between the Texas Association of Community Colleges, as well as Community College Associates. Association of Texas Trustees Legislative Joint Committee, that's where we get together with the trustees, ladies and gentlemen, where the CEOs and trustees come together with a special emphasis on watching the legislative items together. That's very, very important. On the 11th, as you might imagine, with all the things heating up in the Texas ledge, that there was a special called meeting for the association's CEOs only. This is where we get together and deal with very, very granular issues as it pertains to legislative items that are coming across, across the tape, if you will. Couple weeks shortly after that, there was the monthly call, which we continue to, which is atypical to a, well, is only typical during a legislative session. On top of all the other meetings, we maintain a monthly, and I participate in that as well. Finally, on the 31st, I want you all to know that I gave testimony to the, at the Capitol, to the House Committee on Ways and Means in support of HB 3093. This is a piece of legislation that pertains to the appraisal district language that is seeking to correct the anomaly that we experienced at the, a couple of short years ago, and I want you to know that I continue to main, may be on standby for as soon as this coming Monday to begin continuing testimony at the levels with the, with the levels of the Senate committees and so forth. So that's turning into a bit of a process, but that completes my report at this point. I will bring back more information when I do testify, but I'm happy to answer any questions today.
Questions for Dr. Eskamia? Seeing none, we'll move on to our staff reports. We're going to invite Dr. Leonard Rivera to come up and talk to us about the Gates Foundation Grant with Corpus Christi ISD.
Thank you, Chair, Regents, President Eskamia. Super excited about this, don't see it on this, there you go, thanks. Very excited about this opportunity. We just were able to firm this up last Wednesday at King High School, and this is our Corpus Christi ISD-Gates Foundation Contigo Grant partnership, and it's, it's going to be a great partnership in that we will be working hand-in-hand with CCISD for the next four years to really solidify further advising in our dual enrollment programs. The key outcomes of this grant will be to provide early college course access, that is to increase the percentage of students in early college coursework, and then, of course, increase the number of students that will enroll in at least 15 credit hours. One thing that I will point out as we go through these slides is that you'll notice a lot of this stuff really aligns perfectly with House Bill 8, and that's what's really significant about this partnership. Secondly, we have the early college coursework attainment, increasing the percentage of graduates that earn at least 15 credit hours. Third, opposed secondary enrollment, increase the percentage of graduates enrolling in college immediately upon high school graduation. And then fourth, keeping college on track for students, and that is increasing the percentage of students who remain on track to complete their gateway or core courses their first year of college. And this will be monitored in several ways. It's going to be through college readiness in English and mathematics, the completion of FAFSA, TASFA, college applications, their GPA, and their student perceptions of college. And of course, we'll be working in conjunction with Contigo Ed as we monitor the outcomes. And those that may not be familiar with Contigo Ed, they were founded in 2019 by a gentleman of name Donald Komutzmatz, I'm trying to pronounce his name, but the sole purpose of Contigo Ed is really to ensure students, regardless of their backgrounds, are advised by highly skilled and effective educational advisors, and that's one of its key tenets of Contigo Ed, which partners perfectly to this grant opportunity. Grant strategies are listed up there, data infrastructure, that is building the data infrastructure so that data could be mined on what is gathered through the experience over the next four years. Quality advising, again, as I said earlier, Contigo Ed's about advising, about utilizing skilled, prescriptive advising to ensure students gain the outcomes, and so this is one of the key tenets or strategies of the grant. And then third, dual enrollment, that is ensuring that there are pathways for all students in high school to be able to participate in dual enrollment opportunities, whether it's their academics or career technical education opportunities. And that sums up the partnership. I'm open to any questions, if there's any questions at all about this grant partnership.
Does the funding go through Delmar or through CCISD?
Through CCISD.
Okay. So we're the dual credit partner, but it's their grant?
Correct. And I'll say this, is that there was only a handful of grants of this type that were given out through the entire state of Texas, were one of maybe...
Seven.
Seven, okay. And it was a very small number.
Relatively speaking, yes. Out of the 50, we're one of seven. I think we're the smallest.
Yes.
And what do we think the number of students are going to be that go through or tracked by this?
I think it's speculative at this point. When you think of the number of students that are graduating, if you think about the junior classes and the senior classes within CCISD at any given point, I mean, we're talking about several students, several thousand students that'll be touched or affected by this, potentially. And I think those data, those baselines is what we're really seeking to get started on. So we'll come back on a follow-up absolutely to you all, because this is going to be a regular part of our agenda as we move forward with this grant. The level of commitment from CCISD is squarely pointed to, I mean, we are in the center of that bullseye for CCISD. I have to say that, in speaking to the leadership at the signing, and thank you, Regent Loeb, for attending with us at King High School last week, it was, it was just a lot of fun on top of everything else, but what I heard from them was so poignant, and I wanted to share this with everyone. They said the years of dedicated service, love, and support for those students at CCISD is what's making all the difference in why they chose us, only us. And so that is a big deal on top of everything, but stay tuned, Regents, we will be bringing back regular reports on this, and we're very excited about this opportunity.
It sounds like the building of that data system is going to be really critical and could be something scalable to other school districts that we could invest in. After it's built and tested and figured out, that seems like it would be a great tool for us with all of our ISD partners.
I've spoken to two, at least two other CEOs, for sure Justin up in Dallas and so forth, so we're going to stay in touch with them as well, because they are a little, well, they're actually significantly ahead of us in some ways, and so we're going to be learning from them, and then obviously, we're going to share everything together. So I'm hoping together, I'm hoping that there'll be a small grouping of those participating in this grant that can come together and share those valuable pieces of information.
Great, thank you. Mr. Loeb, Regent Loeb, and then Dr. Rivera.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed going to the, to the signing, and I had an opportunity to talk to Dr. Clement afterwards, and we talked about CCISD allowing summer credit and after-hours credit, and she said that they were independently already working on changing their policy, because the old policy was in base, based on, or was not based on dual credit not having cost for students, and that by making it cost-free, that was kind of getting rid of a lot of the reason for why they had that policy in place to begin with. And I think if they do that, that will allow us to dramatically expand access, because we'll be able to do summer and, you know, nights and even weekends if we get to that. So it was, it was a very... we get to that. So it was, it was a very helpful experience, I think.
I have a question to Leonard. So is this a four-year grant from Gates Foundation? And is it renewable after the end of four years?
Yeah, the, the idea is to build up that infrastructure and for the institutions to institutionalize this. So a little bit, a little bit more about how we're going to move. It's not just a one-sided grant. But certainly, the, the items that Dr. Givetta posted up there, like the data infrastructure that Chair Scott was talking about, and all of those, and, and the redevelopment of their employee base to sustain what is built over the four years is, is the price. Our corresponding action really lies in some, our redevelopment of our House Bill 8 initiatives and so forth to, to respond to both, to the FAST program, which is our dual credit program, and the like, is, is how we're responding to the, to the grant. We will have some new positions that ultimately will report with in, through our centralized advising model that we're building, but that will be working very closely with Dr. Givetta. So we'll have some new positions coming. We've been loosely referred to as campus navigators. I think we're going to call them something else down the road. So we'll be corresponding with, with some full-time positions in the, in the near future to, to, to correspond to this grant. So that's kind of how we're working it out. But institutionalizing is the key to this.
Right. Okay. Right. Thank you.
So we would get reimbursed for our time expenses and so on for the grant?
The grant will go through to build the infrastructure through and for CCISD to focus on us. Our, our, our shifts with HB8, all of our moves and redevelopment of our, of our student support services to correspond to HB8 and the FAST dual credit program is our in-kind and our investment in this grant. So, so the grant really goes to CCISD to build it out and for them to focus on bringing students to us. Our return on the investment, if I may just add this, Mr. Grohl, is, is our return on the investment is them focusing more students than ever through, than they ever have, to our FAST program and dual credit courses. We would then receive more return on that.
So it's kind of a roundabout?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, it's to increase the dual credit participation.
Dual credit, therefore, we get more reimbursement from House Bill 8.
Yes, completions.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Rivera. And you stay there. You're going to talk to us about communities and schools partnership.
Yes, ma'am. Get that prompted up there. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So of course, super excited about the partnership with CCISD. This one, I would say, I'm beyond the scales on this one here. This is a fantastic, amazing partnership, Communities and Schools Partnership, that we're engaging in going forward. And a lot of folks may be familiar with Communities and Schools and their mission and what they do throughout our schools in the coastal bend. But I'll give you a short, brief of what they are all about. So Communities and Schools' mission is to surround students with a community of support, and then basically ensuring that students sustain school and achieve in life. And that's their mission per Communities and Schools. They've been around for almost 40 years, and of course, they are in eight counties, 18 districts, 65 campuses, and have almost 80 employees that service schools, service our students here in the coastal bend and throughout our region. So again, a large, I would say, contingent of folks, case managers and other supporters that are out there working with students each and every day. They have assumed or accrued almost 18,000 hours of intervention services. There are six types of core services that are provided by way of this grant. It's through academic support, supportive guidance and counseling, health and human services, parent and family engagement, enrichment activities, and lastly, college and career readiness, which is going to be one of the larger core services that we will engage with, with Communities and Certainly a proven model for success. They have three tiers of services. They have tier one, which is school-wide services, tier two, targeted programs and services, and three is the individualized supports, intensive services that are provided to students as And so some of the collaborative, I guess, metrics and, and items that we will partner with the Communities and Schools is to do the following: increase high school students' participation in our dual enrollment programs here at Delmar College, increase high school senior transfer rates to Delmar College, increase awareness of our college and dual enrollment programs to the elementary and middle schools. Again, we're going to go down deeper than we ever have before to really get more awareness or build more awareness into those lower-level grades, and provide ongoing support services to all dual enrollment students to ensure that they are able to perform and complete the courses that they set out to, to take. Also, provide outreach to prospective dual enrollment students, their families, and then the community level at all angles of that. And then, lastly, they will, we will work with them on all the detailed monthly reports pertinent to our House Bill 8 metrics and other milestones and achievements. And so at this point, I want to recognize and call up our, our partners. We have our chairwoman of Communities and Schools, Ms., please come forward, Ms. Salter. We're also accompanied by our, another board member, our beloved Dr. Larry Lee. We have also Chief Executive Officer Gloria Taylor, and lastly, Chief Programs Officer, Ms. Krista Creek. I want to pass the mic over so they can come say a couple of words.
Hi. I just wanted to say we are forever grateful and so excited. And I would really like you to hear from our CEO.
Gloria Taylor.
Good afternoon, Board Chairman, Board of Regents, Dr. Eskamia, and Community. We tell our students all the time to dream and to dream big. And when Dr. Givetta invited me to go to lunch, first of all, I don't say no to lunch, but never would I anticipated to have a partnership. And then to got to meet, to meet in person the esteemed Dr. Eskamia for lunch, and they were both so excited about what we could bring to Delmar. Hearing Isaiah's story today reminds us, there are so many of our students in the 18 counties that we serve, so many Isaias, that their dreams are just ready to happen. We are so excited. So when Dr. Vialliata and Mr. Garcia, I have to thank them as well for giving the recommendation, but they asked me, "Are you excited?" I said, "I can't contain my excitement." I want to scream out loud and scream so loud for everyone. I have so many CEO partners across the state of Texas and our umbrellaist agency, the Texas Education Agency, that are also so excited and want to see what develops from this, so we can hope to be a model for others across the state. So we are so fortunate and so forever grateful for this opportunity, and we look forward to being wonderful partners. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If enthusiasm was, if we could bottle it, we'd be, be able to sell a lot, wouldn't we? When we were at the Bellwether Awards, Dr. Rivera, the keynote speaker there, talked about some of the keys to success when, when he does research in outcomes-based results, but not outcomes as we think of them in terms of credentials and certificates and diplomas. They, they look at impact on life and impact on, on communities and impact on the ability to earn a living, to support a family. And one of the keys to success in his presentation were communities and, and community colleges who have figured this out, is those communities that have a robust, successful Communities and Schools program. So we're excited to be partnering with you, because we know the value that community and schools brings to, to the campus level, to support the teachers and the work that's going on there, but obviously directly to the students as well. So we're excited as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say to Devin, Gloria, and Krista, thank you for being here so much. We look forward to this. A couple items, but for the newer Regents who may not know, Dr. Larry Lee is retired Dean Emeritus here at Delmar College, long-serving servant to Delmar College. My mentor for, for a good amount of years before I left, yes, Dr. Lee, those meetings were meant for me, not you, many of them. Thank you for your leadership, all that you've done, and hope you continue to enjoy your retirement. But serving on a board like this as a board member just makes it all the more credible, easy, and, and wonderful to, to regain a partnership with you, Dr. Lee. I mean that so much. Thank you. Just quickly, Regents, so the leadership, out of the 78 employees, the leadership of Community and Schools will live with us, about seven or eight, give or take, let's just say 10, less than 10 is what I understood, will live with us at the, at the Heldon Fells Administration Business Area. But the other 70 or so employees are going to be deployed, Regent Garza, into the elementary schools and the middle schools that we've, you've been, you've been talking about for so long, and cross-functionally trained with and for Delmar College's mission to be out there. So for, to be able to, to get out there and, and serve our students in a, in a way that we've not been able to before, we will do this through this wonderful partnership. There will be, and I must say, there will be small stipends, relatively speaking, to, to, to different levels for some employees and so forth. But for 78 employees, it is a, it is a very, very small commitment to, to reaching out into as, as young as the elementary school ages to talk about the core values of education and so forth, and certainly the opportunities that are here at Delmar College for them. So we look forward to future reports and data gathering and those kinds of things and so forth. And Dr. Lee, thank you so much. And to, to all the other board members, please give them our regards, and we look forward to presenting to them as, at your, and we'll be here at your service as well as a board member, sir.
We do have a Regent that has a question or comment. Mr. Lowe?
I, I just wanted to say, it's, you can scream all you want. No, I, we've, we've had a consistent discussion about outreach and going further in communicating at the high school and middle school and elementary school level. And it was always a question of how much can we do within the resources we have. And so when Mark told me about this, I was, I just said, "This is genius. You're solving like five different issues at the same time." And so we are, we are just as thrilled to be a part of this partnership as you are, maybe even more so. So, and, you know, in, in a lot of ways, you'll be another set of our eyes and ears, or 78 sets of eyes and ears. And so we, we really welcome feedback on how we can serve those communities better, because we want to be their choice where they can go and get an affordable education. So thank you so much for this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, and, and thanks, Dr. Rivera, for bringing this to us. All right, our next staff report is going to be our enrollment update, and we're going to ask Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez, Dr. Halcom, and Dr. Rivera to come back up.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, Dr. Eskamia. Today, my colleagues and I will provide information on this semester's student enrollment report and credit continuing education for spring 2025. Today's report will continue to discuss our credit and continued education enrollment data, which Doctors Halcom and Rivera will explain in greater detail, and the House Bill 8 funding impacts, followed by a conclusion. HB8 went into effect fall 2023, and funding rules are still evolving. More recently, we had conversations about credentials of value and understanding that calculation in funding. The work in progress continues with phenomenal collaboration between many college departments, faculty, curriculum management between Registrar's Office, Continuing Ed, the Jonda's Office, I'm having drawn a blank right here, Corporate Services, and IR. Understanding all the HB8 indicators is crucial to understanding the funding under this bill. The good news for Delmar is that enrollment is trending upward, as you can see from the slide. Various college populations have been returning to school, and under continuing education, there has been a significant increase, thus propelling the overall enrollment for Delmar College. The current gender profile for our institution continues to be predominantly female, but males continue to increase in number, which is great to see. And now I'll have Dr. Halcom provide update information on enrollment.
So now I'll talk a little bit about credit programs and the enrollment there. I thought it'd be of great interest to see what our top programs are, at least the awards that are conferred. And you can see health areas are still in great demand and from our students that want to be in the programs. Of course, it's a heavy demand in our community as well to provide proper health care. We see here also liberal arts is a top area, air conditioning, welding, of course, is one of those where industry keeps wanting more and more welders, and, and we're trying to keep up the best we can with those demands, and our students are completing in droves. And then business administration is one of the areas where students are getting their awards. Now, some of the top majors, we do have a lot of students declaring liberal arts as a major, or dual credit students also, many of them declare liberal arts as majors. But once again, our health areas, nurse education is a top major, as I mentioned in the previous slide, pre-med tech, welding once again, quite a few, 746 certificate majors just in welding alone. A lot of our dual credit sites are demanding welding. Of course, our industry, once again, as I mentioned, really high demand there. You'll see our BAST degree under management. So we have the BAST degree, the AAS, 48 certificates, the OSA's all under management, and that's a part of the top six of our declared majors. So I think that's very telling of where our students are taking classes. Now, just briefly, how are we doing with our dual credit? And here I'm not, this does not include continuing education, it's only including the credit courses, and we see over a 10-year period, 106% increase. That's quite an increase, and I see it going even higher. That's our trend. Credit contact hours, you see from spring to spring, it's increasing, and even a one year, we see a 7.3% increase just in contact hours alone. And it's always interesting where our contact hours are a little bit higher in the spring than fall. That seems to be something unique to Delmar College as compared to many other institutions. Quite interesting there. And I know Dr. Eskamia has brought that up before, you know. And once again, we see that trend. Now, how do we compare with our other peer colleges? Unfortunately, they have not produced the 2025 spring data yet, but we have the spring 2024. There are two schools that really have lesser head counts in '24 than what we did. Most of the other schools have been slightly higher percentage-wise in increase in head count. However, if you look at the line graph, you can see we are really curving up quite a bit. So you see spring of 2025 curving. And so I think that comparison, once that data is released, will show that we've increased quite a bit. Dr. Eskamia?
I want to put a flag on this one, because I want you to come back and, and remember these slides, because we're, we're different than those that are slightly ahead in my former institution, Tyler Junior College in Laredo. I love them dearly, but I want to beat them anyway. But so, but, but what's happening right now is both those institutions watch us for, guess what, for the CE side. When you put everything into context and give the full spectrum, it's, there's, this is only half the story. And so I want you to put a flag on this, and then we'll come back on the other half of this presentation to show you what I'm talking about there, because they are, and, and we're helping them, but we're literally getting calls from them, especially, well, our brothers and sisters in Laredo, which we're going to help gladly and lovingly. to help gladly and lovingly. But they're asking us, how do we do what y'all are doing over their best? And there's actually more colleges calling us, too. Sorry, a little commercial. Thank you.
That's wonderful. So as soon as we get the spring 2025 data for the other institutions, we'll put that together for the next presentation so you can see how we compare. But as Dr. Eskamia mentioned, the continuing education enrollment, they're calling about those things. And Dr. Rivera is going to come forward now and talk about the CE right now and where we are with enrollment.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Halcom. Appreciate that. So as Dr. Halcom pointed out, on the credit side of the House, I'd like to point out our programs, our top programs on the continuing education side of the House, healthcare programs, as very like our credit programs, continue to be our largest program of study, followed by our Texas Workforce Commission's Adult Education Literacy Grant, otherwise known as our High School Equivalency or GED grant, and then followed by our construction or home repair programs that we offer under our continuing education programs. Largest programs, again, is our, by enrollment, is our healthcare programs. And healthcare programs, and just so we put that in perspective, what I mean by healthcare programs, that's going to be, so the programs as EKG, phlebotomy programs, patient care technician programs, certified nurses' aid programs, and other types of medical assisting, and other like programs. Those continue to be very, very in high demand across not only our adult population, but also our high school populations at large. Next slide we have to show you is our enrollments that we have provided for you. Right now, we are showing a slight one-year decrease, a 1% decrease in our total enrollments. These are individuals, students that are counted, unduplicated students that are counted. So we're showing a slight decrease in total enrollments. However, our programs and our completion rates are still tracking very well. And next up, to provide a wrap-up, is going to be our Vice President, Patricia Dominguez.
So the final two slides show a historical perspective on credit and continuing education from 2019 to the current academic year. As you can see, contact hours has steadily increased. And although we don't show the '24-'25 data, it is not represented on this slide, we are growing. We know more students are coming back to-
Can we advance the slide?
I'm sorry. There we go. We know our enrollment is growing. As Dr. Eskamia has previously stated, this represents two sides of the coin of our enrollment, which is showing a 4% one-year increase for '23-'24 academic year. And this week, we opened up registration for summer and fall, and we're trending really good today. Similarly, the final slide shows a headcount breakdown of credit and continuing education for spring '21 to the current term. From '24 to '25 academic year, you can see Delmar College trending upward with a one-year increase of 11.3%. The key takeaway is that you see a positive credit and continuing education enrollment trends, specifically in dual enrollment and continuing education populations, which is the overall growth in student composition and contact hours. Questions?
I have a, just a comment, I guess. You had several slides in there that talked about contact hours, but with House Bill 8 focusing on outcomes, is contact hours really a, I don't want to use the word valid, but is it a necessary metric?
I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, we still need contact hours for, not only for contacts, but we also get slight funding still in contact hours under HB8. Yes, we do.
It's very small, but it's a source of product for reporting also. We have to report them still to the state. It also gives us, gives us a very fine granular gauging mechanism to talk about production, because sometimes you can have headcount down, but contact hours might be up, or the reverse. And so it's like a tachometer on an old muscle car, if you will.
That's a very good way to say that.
And I would think it's one of those leading indicators for us, yeah. So we could see a problem if our contacts, contact hours are down significantly, then we don't have students that are completed, that are working towards total completion. They're just taking random hours.
And you can also leverage the contact hours to see where the growth is and what areas. So contact hours are an important indicator for the academic side and the student affairs side of the House to see where resources should be deployed. Mr. Loeb?
Speaking of deploying resources, on the, I mean, 30% increase in CE students, is that even across the programs, or is it specific programs?
Yeah, thanks for the question. The single one program that is, and it was indicated in our slide earlier, I could probably go back to it here, if I could find that way, it puts everything in context here. You see our healthcare programs, that's where our largest growth is occurring, is healthcare programs. They're just a high demand. We just can't even provide enough. I mean, that's how much demand there is at the school level, at the ISD level, and even our open enrollment here at the college campus. So we're feeding that demand as much as possible, and then some. And so we're going to continue to see trends like this as we go forward, because health services is just something that everyone needs in this day and age, and it's going to continue to trend up, not down.
So the stresses are on us, and we're probably governed, if you will, by the amount of resources that we could produce in the way of faculty and the like. So from a, having access to enough professionals is a day-to-day challenge. The team has the connections, the team is doing, I think, extremely well, but it continues to be a stressor, Regent Loeb.
Okay. And I mean, I guess that was going to be my next question. We lost Northwest. Are we good on facility space? I mean, are we able to make some of it up by teaching it out of the high schools?
So, yeah, and even the high school is experiencing some growing pains there because of some construction and some other things there. So the reality is that that space could have been and would have been some spillover space. We're using the high school adequately. We're using multiple forms of delivery, utilizing online as well as face-to-face, doing the best we possibly can. I'm very thankful to the leadership over there, Emily and others at Cal Allen High School for helping us. We're stressed out there as well, to answer the question.
Okay. I mean, I assume once we've got rock poured up, part of the design of that is to be able to shift some of that student base to that facility.
So in that, across the bridge, yes. Yes, and you will notice that we started off with healthcare programs as the fundamental, or the foundation offerings out there for this very reason right there. Any community can only go as far as their health will take them, and we're trying to facilitate as best we can. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to comment on the unduplicated headcount slide. Want to go back to that, the very last one. There we go. There we go. I have always appreciated this number because of the part-time students that we have, that when we talk about the number of souls that we are serving in our service area, this is an important number for me, because it equates, whether you're here for a biology class, or an English class, or a welding class, or a phlebotomy class, we're going to, we're touching almost 14,000 souls this spring semester who need some sort of education, some sort of training from Delmar College. My question associated with that is extrapolating that to our annual unduplicated headcount, do you have a sense of what that's going to be for the academic year yet?
I can only guess, and Patricia, you're going to guess, too. I mean, at this point, when we finalize it, it's going to be well over, well over 20,000 students. I think it'll be 22-plus, 23 even. We've been as high as 24, and we're going to be approaching that. I know that's the number you're looking for, Madam Chair, because we've talked about it many times before. So we can finalize those numbers probably in coming weeks, maybe...
Not till the end of the academic year.
You still have summer.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, the whole academic year falls.
So this is summary to the spring only. My apologies. I'm losing my calendar. So you're going to have to wait a few more weeks now, Madam Chair.
I'm going to have to wait a few more weeks for that. But I just, that really means a lot to me that we are, we have surpassed 2021, and again, almost hitting 14,000 unduplicated headcount. I think that's an important number.
We'll have a more accurate number in the fall when we certify.
Okay, so it's going to be a few more months, and I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Got a little ahead of myself.
Are there any questions or comments for the team? Thanks so much for this detail. Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Loeb?
I would just say on completions as well, my non-data observation is, I don't remember anybody yelling on Facebook going into spring graduation that they couldn't get enough tickets for graduation. So I assume it's because we have a lot of people who are graduating, and we can only fit so many people in the building, and so we have to throttle everybody, and that's a good problem to have.
I saw that, and routinely what we do is encourage them to reach out to us, because invariably, whenever we have the American Bank Center, there's more room, but we're trying to use, we try to be very judicious.
I'm going to give them all your cell phone number.
Thank you. Thank you. My wife appreciates that very much.
All right. So our last staff report is going to be Dr. Natalie Villarreal to give us our legislative update.
Good afternoon, Dr. Eskamia, Madam Chair, Regents. So I'd like to give you an update today on state and national legislation that is currently in process. Today, we'll focus primarily on what is happening at the state level, since we are about midpoint of the way through the 89th legislative session. So all bills at this point have been filed, and so right now, most of the committees in the House and in the Senate are meeting regularly and moving those bills along. So today, I'd like to update you on three major areas happening at the state level, which is appropriations, our funding, our governance, issues that revolve around taxes, our ad valorem taxes, all the way to bills affecting you as Regents, and then also water resources, just to touch on that, since that is such a priority here at the state level. So I added a few slides for the presentation today that you did not receive in your packets. I'll start with this one, Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 1. So of course, for the state of Texas, our budget is always the first number-one priority, which is why it is the number-one bill on both sides. And I'm so proud to report that the work being done by our community colleges around the state, and specifically the people in this room here at Delmar College, have really given us a platform to secure more funding. And that is something we couldn't ask for more. So when we say more funding, more funding for our students, more funding for our faculty and staff, really to build our communities. And so just to remind you, for the Delmar College budget, we're talking about 17% to 20% of our yearly budget when it comes in terms of our appropriations. The one thing that has been a little different between the House and the Senate side is the way they are putting appropriations in for financial aid. There is a significant difference there, and so we are going to be working that to make sure when both pills, excuse me, when both bills pass and they go to conference committee, that we try to advocate to ensure that we're getting the most from financial aid as we can. Does anybody have any questions about the general appropriations bill? Then I'd like to go ahead and move on to House Bill 2110. This one is so extremely important because this is that follow-up bill to House Bill 8, which is creating, you know, such a catalyst here at the college and all over the state. So this one is moving very quickly. It has already been cleared by the Higher Ed Committee in the House. And so now, it's actually one of the first bills that's moving on to calendars, which the House just is just now starting to look at that. And as you know, Chairman Hunter is the Chair of Calendars for the 89th session. So this is an opportunity for us to advocate and let our delegation know that we are very proud of House Bill 2110, and we'd like to see it move forward and go into calendars. So that's definitely a yes to our delegation.
Just out of curiosity, what is ICUT?
Those are the independent colleges and universities in the state of Texas. So those are the private schools, I believe. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago. What we would like to do is for House Bill 8 to now include, right, any time somebody transfers, to include that to private institutions as well, and we would receive those appropriations. Right now, under House Bill 8, that was not specified.
So Baylor, you know, going from McLennan College and so forth to all those private institutions.
Is it a duplication to say private in ICUT, or is it...
They're all members of ICUT, and it's an association. It's the equivalent of TACC for community colleges.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm still trying myself, so.
Sorry about that, Regent Kroll. I would like to address Senate Bill 37 and spend a little bit more time on this one, because it does have major implications regarding authority for you as a governing board, and it restructures the duties of our faculty, our Senate councils, in regards to curriculum oversight. So this bill is moving very quickly, and there are groups, such as the American Association of University Professors and other advocacy groups that champion for academic freedom and shared governance, have been very vocal on the challenges that come with this bill. So part of that is restructuring of governments, governance that's already in place, and also as elected officials, it does put more responsible, more responsibility on you to oversee academic policies, curriculum, and administrative positions. So as of right now, this bill has started to gain some momentum. So I just wanted to let you know that, because it does, again, have those major implications when it comes to how the college conducts our business and oversight of leadership and academia.
I'd just like to say, Regents, on this one, we're going to watch this one very closely. You'll probably, you will see another legislative report at next month's meeting, for sure, as these develop. To all the faculty and staff, we've worked through this legislation. I'm working with the faculty council, as I do with, as I do on a regular basis, on a monthly basis. With this particular piece of legislation, I've asked faculty council to summarize their perspective through that governance structure that we, that we use very, very much so, and with all due diligence. And so I've asked them to put together a one-page or two to summarize both strengths and weaknesses of this particular piece of legislation. The legislation is thick, it is onerous, it is really, really restrictive in a lot of ways. It changes lots of things, including my role in this seat, and certainly you all's roles as Regents. It fundamentally has a big shift. We don't know how much of it, or in what iteration, will ultimately pass with, and so we're going to stay in very close touch. A lot of this information coming off is hot off the press. I mean, it's the day-to-day, it probably is changing as we are sitting here conducting this meeting. And so as such, just know that we will be watching it on a day-to-day, minute-by-minute basis. And if there's anything alarming of it with it, we'll pass that out to you in advance of the May meeting. Thank you.
Yes, as of yesterday, Texas Association of Community Colleges and the Community College Association of Texas Trustees has decided that they will go ahead and start meeting with Creighton's office about this bill. So it is moving, like you said, Dr. Eskamia, day-to-day right now. So we will definitely keep you posted on that.
Senator Brandon Creighton is Chair of all things Higher Ed and Public Ed for the Senate. Thank you.
So can you, like, give an example of what this bill would, how it would impact the Board of Regents?
Yes, sir. I do have a few pieces of overview here that I can just kind of talk out. For example, you would have to have annual review of core curriculum. You would have the management and control of ensuring courses are foundational and fundamental when it comes to post-secondary education. You would have to, you would have to ensure that the courses prepare students for civic life. You would have to ensure that the courses prepare students for civic life, ensure that they're participating in the workforce and the betterment of society. You would have to make recommendations regarding maintaining or eliminating courses. You would approve or deny anything on an individual basis that would be recommended for a committee that would be put together by the state. Those are just a few things in terms of what extra pieces would happen, not to mention the structure that is already in place, the governance structure that our faculty has in, you know, adding and eliminating coursework and working with our industry partners that would be eliminated for a new committee that would be appointed.
In addition to some hires, administrative hires and the like, so there's...
So, hiring of administrative positions, how far down into the organization does that?
I believe, as I've read, the last iteration I read, I think went to the, or up to the dean's level, or I should say, yeah, president to the dean's level, is I understood it. It may have changed since then, but...
Yeah, that's what it said. I mean, and I think there was another thing in there that we have to, we'd have to approve the job postings for any tenure-track position.
Correct.
Prior to it being posted.
Much of the, bits and pieces of this law already exists in our policies. We are an extremely efficient and well-governed organization without this law. With this law, it's going to be filling in, the way I look at it, it's going to be filling, albeit substantially, filling in on a lot of practices that we currently do have, but some of them are just absolutely 180 degrees different from the way we conduct our business here. So, stay tuned. We'll be bringing it back close, we'll watch it closely.
This bill is not specifically for community colleges. It's for all higher ed, correct?
It's for all higher ed, correct. I believe, what I, I believe I know, how about that? What I believe is that it was focused primarily at the large university systems, and we, it seemingly will be participating in this language, even though it is built very, in my opinion, as you read through it, built very specifically for universities.
So, we get sucked in again.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I express, just as a lifelong advocate of academic freedom, both in public and private institutions, this is a cause of concern for me, where it's heading, who is behind this initiative, and who are the advocates defending academic freedom? I don't see visibly anybody, you know, standing up for academic freedom. So, I'm just wondering if our representative Todd Hunter or people we know who are supporters of this institution can speak up maybe later, maybe we can have discussions with them to express our own ambivalence and anxiety behind this. I mean, this affects faculty independence. I mean, I see an oversight that is developing, which is beyond academia. And that really, you know, as a Regent, I'm expressing my concern over this, and I think if Chair Scott and President Eskamia, if you can speak up for us on behalf of Delmar College and higher education in the state of Texas, and I'll be happy to lend my hand to if you wish.
Dr. Beverly, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, after several decades of doing this and seeing this change, it's, like I said, a 180 view from the way I was, from my experience over the years. We are watching this closely through and with the Texas Association of Community Colleges as is proper and is our best, most effective venue or entity to work through with this. And so, as such, they, the leadership there knows what Delmar College, how Delmar College operates and believes in. That being said, out of the 50 colleges being locally governed, there's 50 different, they run, they're run in 50 different variations, right? And so, it's, we're trying to do, using the most utilitarian type of approach to this so that we can come out as unscathed as possible. As Chair Scott said and indicated, this was written for higher ed per se, which oftentimes in the legislature and in the education code leaves out community colleges, but we believe unequivocally that we are going to be included in whatever version comes out. The version is not done yet.
Correct.
So, that's our opportunity yet. I take your words under advisement.
And Dr. Bobbley, in speaking with our faculty who are advocating personally, from their own behalf, out for higher education, there are associations at the Capitol Daily right now doing that work that continue to meet with the legislation across the state on this important topic. But I think we can, you know, we all understand too, that this one bill is significant of so many other bills and waves of, you know, of other challenges when it comes to academic freedom. So, this is one of many. This is a big one. Does anybody have any more questions on that? Let's move to a positive one, shall we? So, I'd like to now switch gears a little bit to our ad valorem tax bills, which stands to have a significant impact on Delmar College and other colleges in a very positive way. So, I'd like to focus on Senate Bill 1052 and House Bill 3093, which both were authored from our own delegation, Senator Chuyena Hossa and Representative Denise Villalobos on the House side. This is a significant bill, because it's protecting the community college when a property owner appeals, which, of course, you have the right. But the timing and the length of the appeal process is what leads to the major issues with the budgeting process and the finances of the college. We lived that firsthand a couple of years ago. So, under this bill, the college would be able to use the previous year's numbers to budget and plan for the following year during the appeals process, which we know can be quite lengthy. So, again, we really do appreciate the support of our local delegation on this. In fact, it was Representative Denise Villalobos's first bill to present, and so it really was an honor to see a freshman from our delegation go through the process, especially in support of a bill that is so important to the college. So, I just want to give you this one quick detail, if you start hearing about it and talking about it. This specific bill, 1052 and 3093, focuses on the coastal communities with taxing entities under $500,000. There are two other bills that are very close that focus on this from a statewide legislation. So, we are really monitoring both. As Dr. Eskamia mentioned before, he is going to testify. We're waiting on confirmation of that date on the Senate side, as he did testify with Noyes County Judge Connie Scott and our tax assessor Kevin Kishnik on the 31st on the House side. I want to talk briefly, because in talking with CAT, there's a lot of bills that affect you as a Board of Trustees. And so, CAT is maintaining their own list of legislation and bills that really affect the board role. So, Senate Bill 37 was an example of that. But another example that I wanted to bring your attention is House Bill 4403. And on the Senate side, Adam Inahosa authored Senate Bill 2504, the companion, which this gives you, the board, an option if you want to admit runoffs and have the highest vote earner win the election. So, that is currently up, and it is moving quickly through the committees. So, that is something that would give you the option to do that if you chose to do so.
So, if there were, under that bill, if it passed, if there were, like, three people running, you could, we could opt to have the highest vote earner be the winner without having a runoff?
Correct. At least gives you the option.
That's currently our option, so I'm not sure what the change is. We declared...
Do we declare on the, I guess, it's a statewide...
Years ago, there was an option, so I think this expands that to other entities.
Yes.
But runoff, yes. Yeah, we've had the option to accept election results by plurality.
My understanding in the background on this one is, he has another community college in his district, and they have, due to how their system works, I think they're all at large places, and so there's a runoff every election, and there, it's, and in a lot of cases, it's the only runoff, and so they're paying for a district-wide runoff every election, and it's getting expensive.
And cumbersome and time-consuming and so forth. I've spoken with the individuals that have brought this forth. I've shown them the structure. I brag on our structure all the time with the both at-large, a combination of at-large and district representatives, and the number nine being integral to that. I've given my best information forward, and it's still moving up, so we'll see.
One of the last things I'd like to bring up for an advocacy level is, there has been discussion of advocating regarding the tuition freeze from the governor's office. So, that has been something that has come up in being able to talk about and explain the challenges that the tuition freeze has on our budget. So, just wanted to add that as well. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Before you move to the water bill, is there a bill related to the tax cap? Other municipalities, other entities are capped at a truth in taxation, no new revenue rate of 4%, and we've been, we were able to maintain the 8%. Is there a bill that's going to lower, potentially lower, our tax rate increase as well?
Yes, I'm trying to think. I don't have the list. There's about 20 tax bills that TAC and CAT are watching.
Okay.
And so, we can pull that up and see kind of where that one is heading, but I know those are priorities overall from a taxing perspective that the association is watching.
And then, there's also a bill related to attendance of Board of Regents for higher education institutions.
That one is, yes. Yes, there is one as well, requiring a certain amount of attendance in meetings.
So, if you could pull a little synopsis of that and add that to your, we're not going to meet again until May, so if you could provide, maybe...
We'll set it ahead of time.
Couple of, yeah, a couple of bullet points on that.
Let's make sure, okay, so the attendance for the Regents and the tax...
The tax cap.
Tax cap, to see if community colleges are included. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one I wanted to bring to your attention was Senate Bill 7, because water is such a priority, again, for the entire state, and this is looking to allocate up to $1 billion a year for funding of all new projects in the state of Texas when it comes to water resources. And so, just to give you the information, as our board, as the premier higher education institution here in the coastal bend, we really do feel that Delmar College is poised, with the infrastructure, with where our location is, and with our field experts who are instructors, to really keep the college in the forefront when it is time, and as we start preparing for water resource education, we feel like we are at best poised to lead the way on that. So, we are monitoring that legislation and the impact on what that's going to have educationally.
Just really quickly, that last bullet right there, the coastal bend is being viewed and looked, sought after for leadership in the development of this, and so there may be opportunities in the future to advance the water process technologies that we currently do have in our curriculum. We currently have a small, a relatively small component built in, but it's primarily around maintaining municipal supplies of water. That's going to be a bigger discussion, and we're hoping that Delmar College can be included in this huge investment of not only monetary resources, but leadership capabilities for the entire state of Texas. Stay tuned. We don't know a lot about this yet, but we're watching this develop for sure.
Does anybody have any questions on the state level? This is, yes, sir.
No, not a question. It's just, the technical expertise needed for some of the treatment processes that are now being developed, like D-SAL and others, are much higher than the technical expertise needed for a conventional treatment plan.
Yes, sir.
There needs to be probably some, maybe some discussions with the Water Department and others to maybe develop that program a little bit better, so...
It's going to be an entirely different skill set, we understand. It's only loosely related to what we have. The only reason I mention it, because, like I said, it's a smaller component. Dean Merrill is here, I know he can be, maybe speak to that from his microphone. Could you talk just a little bit about the differences between the process technology side of D-SAL, what we do and don't know about D-SAL, and what we do know about municipal water supply that we're currently teaching?
I'll try. One of the things that we've looked at, and Dan Corus and I have kind of partnered with, we've gone out to the San Patricio Water Treatment Facility about six months ago, when we were hearing about this movement, and then since then, we have a small portion in our curriculum with Process Tech that shows the students how the water is affected through the refineries, and then now, we're looking at other options with the D-SAL, so a lot to look forward to.
It's a whole body of knowledge that we understand we have to gain on, but I just wanted to acknowledge the capabilities that we currently do have. We know they're probably distant cousins, but still dealing with the precious resources of water, and so we're working to understand that better.
Thank you, Regent Kroll. Anyone else? So, I'd like to briefly discuss what's happening at the national level in terms of legislation in higher education. Since we last met, you know, there was a change in leadership at the Department of Education with Linda McMahon, now in charge of education for the United States. There have been several executive orders coming out, and we really are having to focus on what is happening right now. For example, financial aid. We know that financial aid is probably going to be moving, you know, into the small business arena. We believe so. Those things are happening as we speak. One that we are watching closely is an executive order regarding accrediting bodies, is probably coming out soon. This has already happened once before, when President Trump was in office. As you know, we're currently under the Southern Association of Colleges and School Commission Oncologists, you know, we refer to as SAC COC. You know, it's so very important, as you know, for accreditation. It is the livelihood of our institution. It serves as a common denominator of shared values, practices amongst the members. The mission of accreditation is to assure educational quality and improve the effectiveness of its member institutions. And so, what we know right now, that at the federal level and the state level, there are some laws that are being constructed around having the ability to choose if you would like to apply, to go to another accrediting body. In talking to Dr. Zombi, just because you have the option as a college to leave one body, and you have to still apply for another, to enter into another accrediting body and see if they will accept your application. So, we will continue to monitor that, because that is, again, significant. As you can see, this time, there's so many bills going in all different directions, whether it's, you know, ad valorem tax, curriculum, you as Regents, there's a million different things going at a million different levels, and we're really trying to be strategic in making sure that we keep track of everything, so nothing catches us off guard. But that's still a possibility. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Villarreal. All right. We're going to move on to our pending list. In May, we'll be looking at our strategic plan, kind of an update on where staff is in our current plan that we just adopted last fall. We will have an internal audit report for the board, and the Audit Committee will be meeting prior to our May meeting, and then we'll have an update on our strategic enrollment management plan and our strategic... Marketing Plan as well, and obviously our ongoing legislative, another legislative update. If there are any questions on our pending bill, our pending items list, excuse me. If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have four items under our consent agenda, approval of a couple of sets of minutes, the acceptance of our quarterly investment report, and acceptance of our investment report for March and February and March, and then quarterly financials. Does any item need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as adopted? Motion by Dr. Babaly, second by Mr. Kruel. Any public comment on that item? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Please note that Dr. Adami was not present for that vote. And we will move on to, well, we won't move on to number six, because Dr. Eskamia is not in the room. Let's go ahead and move on to, let's see, item number seven, which is discussion and possible action related to dual enrollment tuition and fees for private and homeschool tuition. So Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez is going to present that for us.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Eskamia, today's report will be a presentation regarding dual enrollment, students that are attending private school and homeschools in the coastal bend. Private schools and homeschool students have always participated in dual enrollment. This academic year, we have approximately 94 students enrolled at Delmar College for the schools listed. These students enroll in a mix of online courses or come to our campus and mix in with the regular college population. These students currently pay $33.33 per credit hour and all ancillary costs associated with courses. I will now turn it over to Jackie Lander, my colleague.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So we wanted, now we're going to go over our dual enrollment revenues, so we kind of wanted to give you an idea of what this initiative would cost. Since we implemented the FAST program, the only students we've been charging the basic tuition and fees are students that are homeschooled or attend private schools. So for fiscal year 2024, we collected a little over $40,000. And for this fiscal year, as of the end of February, we've collected a little over 35, so we'll probably be right about 40,000 again by the end of the fiscal year. We also wanted to give you a snapshot of how we were doing before we implemented the FAST program, and then how we're doing as of last fiscal year with that first year of the FAST program. So for, prior to the implementation of FAST, for fiscal year '21 and '22, the college received a little over $1 million for basic tuition and fees for those dual enrollment courses. Fiscal year '23, we collected a little over 1.1 million. And then in fiscal year 2024, we had that first year that we received that reimbursement from the state for that FAST program, and we received a little over $1.7 million. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay. So it is recommended that the Board of Regents allow the staff to provide a tuition waiver to those students that are considered homeschooled or in private school, just for the basic tuition and fees for those dual enrollment courses, beginning in the fall of 2025. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Do we have an estimate on what the, if we are bringing it free, we would assume that there might be an increase in those students. Do we have an estimate of what the potential population of eligible dual enrollment students are in homeschool, private schools? How high is up?
That fluctuates. It's hard to give a number, but it's a healthy number of 100, so give or take.
How many? Say it again.
Hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say 150 maximum. It's a relatively small number. The growth opportunity, however, to matriculate them and to bring them over is where our opportunity is. And I've been meeting with the leadership of some of the faith-based schools and so forth out there. And the commitments that are coming our way far outweigh this. And so from a return on investment through FAST and matriculation is really where our opportunities are going to be. It's going to be, and the gains are going to be, first and foremost, for those students financially, long-term. They do see us as options and so forth. And now, given some other initiatives that we have, it's going, the return option is much greater than this nominal amount, relatively speaking.
Is there any discussion that the, with, to make private school and homeschool students eligible for FAST at the state level?
At the state level? I've not heard that from any legislative standpoint. I think there's a clear line that's being delineated there. But nothing, I don't see any opposition or anything being voiced. Well, take that back. What I recall is that through some other initiatives, through K through 12, let me not mix my legislation. I better get back. I'm going to have to come back to you on that. I don't want to trip over my own thoughts here.
Regent Loeb?
Yeah, I, you know, I heard, I think probably from half the homeschool kid parents after we passed free tuition. I think this is, in some ways, it's because since we did free for everybody, we caught it, and maybe the other colleges have not, because they only do it as, you know, as the state said for, and so a lot of the homeschool and private school students don't normally, wouldn't normally qualify for it under the traditional FAST scholarship program. But I know IWA and John Paul are very excited about enhancing their dual-credit programs. My recollection from seeing our data on how many students we're getting is the private schools, there's only about 1,000 private high school students in our service area, and we are currently getting about 15% of them at any given time. So, you know, it's, if they got up to where CCISD is on average, it would be about 150. And then I think we've got about 40 homeschool students and the, I don't, I don't know how many homeschool students there are, if anybody ever gets that data. But I, there are not a ton of them, but they're, they were pretty vocal when we, in fact, it was the only detractors I heard to our motion, our action before. But I think that the, the homeschoolers, I think, really want to kind of come and do, you know, full completes and get associate's degrees from us, is kind of what I've heard from them, and this is what they like to do.
Just as a reminder, you know, the, these private school students and the homeschool students, their metrics, that their earning count, right, when they earn the 15 semester credit hours, we're getting the 3,500 on the DC metric, right?
Right.
And we have numerous, numerous private school and homeschool students that are earning degrees from us. In December of 2024, we had a John Paul grad who received an associate's degree. This spring, we have numerous private school students graduating from Grace Temple Academy and from John Paul. And in previous years, we've had a number of homeschool students that have also earned an associate's degree from us. So they're very committed and high-performing students.
Yeah. And I'd just say, I'll make the motion, but I think when we did the dual-credit, we were expecting 1.3 million in FAST reimbursements, and we're at 1.7, and that shows how much it grew. And, yeah, we get paid, if they get 15 hours, if they transfer either to us or someplace else, we do get paid. So I'll make the motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, so the motion is to approve a tuition waiver for dual enrollment students attending private and homeschool beginning fall 2025. There's a motion by Regent Loeb and a second by Regent Kruel. Are there any other questions on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to item number eight, discussion and possible action related to the annexation adopted by the City of Corpus Christi for the property identified as Texas Lone Star.
Regents, so in accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 130.066, automatic annexation of certain territory, as the City of Corpus Christi annexes property, the Delmar College may also annex the property. On March 18, 2025, City of Corpus Christi approved an ordinance annexing and rezoning the two-acre tract of land owned by Texas Lone Star Abstract and Title Investments Group, LLC, located southeast corner of Farm Market, FM 43, and County Road 47. The property annexation of approximately 300 linear feet of County Road 47 right-of-way, butting the property's western boundary, and annexation of an approximately 2,490 linear feet of section of FM 43 right-of-way, located between the property's eastern boundary and the London Pirate Road. Approving the related service plan, adding annexed area to the City Council District 3, rezoning the two acres from the FR Farm Rural District to the C&amp;One Neighborhood District. Recommend annexation of this property.
Thank you, Mrs. Stravos. Is there a motion to annex the property as presented? Motion by Dr. Adami, second by Dr. Babaly. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries, are you voting, are you abstaining, or did you raise your hand? I didn't see you vote for, okay. I didn't see you raise your hand. All right, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, voting in favor of, and Mr. Loeb was absent during that vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stravos. Next, we'll have Ms. Tammy McDonald and discuss our action related to property insurance coverage.
Good afternoon. Thank you. In connection with the college's procurement of property and windstorm insurance, the college engaged Mr. Robert Rhime Company, who is an insurance and risk management consultant, to assist the college with the RFP process, with proposal analysis, and to provide a look at our results. Currently, our property insurance will expire on May the 1st, and our current firm is Higginbotham, and our agent is Michael Swatner. But I wanted at this time to ask Ms. Jessica Alnista to come up, and she will provide you with an overview and some history of our property insurance program. Jessica?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. Before we talk about our, excuse me here, before we talk about our RFP for property insurance, I think it's important to give you a brief kind of synopsis of what the market conditions are currently like and what we have seen as we've gone through this RFP process. So currently, the market right now is showing some stabilization due to increased competition in the market. So we've seen, due to that, we've seen some declining rates, which is a good thing for us. The recent fires in California and hurricane in southeast region have not yet affected the market. Usually with a catastrophic event, it kind of lags a little bit behind, so we have not seen that effect. But us being on the coast, it may or may not have an effect on our pricing in the future. So we'll kind of wait to see what that brings us. Us being in the coastal area, we always have that risk of exposure for any natural catastrophe like hurricanes or flooding. So that is something that we always have on the forefront when we look at any kind of property insurance coverage. Here's just a brief history of our last four RFP cycles that we've had for our property insurance program. In 2007, our agent was HRH. We did go out for an RFP process on that, where three agents submitted, and Mr. Rhime also provided consulting services for that. In 2010, our agent that was selected was Carlyle Insurance, again through an RFP process, where two agents submitted, and again, where Mr. Rhime consulted. In 2015, the agent who was selected in the RFP process was Borden Insurance. We had two agents submit in that process, and Mr. Rhime also provided consulting services for that. In our last RFP in 2020, Borden Insurance was the only agent that submitted in the RFP process, and Mr. Rhime provided consulting services for that as well. So as Tammy said, our current insurance agency is Higginbotham. Previously said in 2020, it was Borden's that was selected, but they did merge with Higginbotham in the summer of 2020, so that is who our current carrier is. Our current expiration date for our policy is May 1st of this year, and we use today's date to kind of work our calendar backwards for the RFP process in order to make sure that we had enough time to go out to the market and to get pricing and to notify, and to do all of our legal requirements within, for the RFP process itself. Again, Mr. Robert V. Rhime has provided consulting services for this, just as he has in the past cycles. And he has provided some result summaries for you today regarding that process and how it played out. We always follow the established legal requirements for this process under the Texas Education Code, Section 44.03, to govern what we've done during this. And Ms. Tammy McDonald will go through the RFP process.
Thank you, Ms. Alnista. We'll look a little bit at our property total insurable values, just kind of a recap of it. So for 2025, it was based off of almost 551 million. In 2024, it was a little over 549 million. So we had a slight increase. And then back in '23, it was 546, almost 547 million. But if you look at over the last five years, at our total insurable value, this is buildings and contents, it includes both, we've had about an increase of approximately 30% in our values, because about five years ago, we did see some new buildings and, you know, new campus come online. So that's where that over the five-year average was the 30%. So our RFP process, the, what we asked, Mr. Rhime, like I said, he led the process for us, because we have like a 200 million limit for property and content coverage. But what we do is, when we put out information, we asked the proposers, those who wanted to submit proposals, to give us a primary layer of 25 million. So that's what we call our primary layer. So they submitted, original round was submitted off of this primary layer of 25 million coverage. Agents will be selected from the primary proposals, and will have access to the full market to provide a complete and comprehensive proposal for the entire 200 million. So we looked at what they initially provided at the primary layer, and then per the information we had in the RFP, in that the proposers were told we had the right to choose a primary firm to move forward with full, the full property insurance coverage. All agents were provided the following information. So of course, the RFP terms and conditions, a loss history from 2015 through 2025, loss run reports from the current agent, Delmar College Property Schedule of Values, which details our total insurable values, again, this is buildings and contents, and then Delmar College Property Underwriting Questionnaire. So of course, those who insure, you want to ask a lot of questions. I'm sure we have all been through that with our own properties or homeowners. So they wanted to know about roofs and any preventative measures and any general information about the campus, and then general financial information. So we had to provide that. As far as our timeline, in January, bid invitation letters were sent to 12 agents. And in January, we also published our required newspaper ads. And then at the end of January, we had agents' responses were due for the primary, that 25 million layer. We did have four agents that responded to the invitation for that primary layer. On January 29, the insurance companies were assigned to agents, and RFP terms and conditions were distributed with a primary limit proposal submission deadline of 2:00 PM on March the 5th. So what we did at this part of the process is the insurance companies were assigned to the agents, because if you're going to go to the market and try to get a quote from someone, they won't give a quote to everybody. They're going to give it to whoever you say is the broker of record. So we go through a process, and those insurance companies were assigned based off of information that we gathered from those four who were interested in providing us proposals. So they were assigned companies that they could go out to the market to provide us with this primary layer of the 25 million. On March the 5th, we did have four primary limit proposals received by the 2 o'clock submission, the deadline. From March the 5th to the 7th, we had college staff review the primary limit proposals. We spoke with Mr. Rhime. We had some clarifying questions based off of the submissions-- We had some clarifying questions based off of the submissions from the proposers, and we had Mr. Rhime contact the ones who submitted the proposals to clarify some questions we had off of their submissions. On March the 10th, the one primary limit proposal agent was selected, and we also talked with Ms. Keys and with Dr. Eskemia, and provided them the information in that March 5th, 7th timeframe before we did pick the primary limit proposal. And so we did go over the information with them before we moved on to that next step. The selected agent was to provide a final proposal for the two, the full 200 million dollar limit, and the remaining three agents were notified to release their assigned insurance companies, or to release their markets, so that the primary agent that we picked could go out and possibly gain some additional proposals and value for the college. The final proposal from the selected primary limit agent was due 2:00 on March the 19th, so their full submission of the 200 million was due on the 19th. And then today, of course, we're gonna be recommending the agent, the company, and then also, we're gonna provide you with, I think Ms. Pettis has the result summary from the consultant to provide to you, and we'll review that with our recommendation. I'm gonna give you a moment to briefly review the information from Mr. Rhime. So on the first page, you'll see the results from that primary layer, that 25 million, of the four different proposals that were submitted and that were received. There's some basic information on how many of like clients they have, or customers that they have. It's right underneath the name of the company. There's our deductibles, the coverage amount, so it gives you some of the basis for that. And then it gives you the premium, the cost that they received for that primary 25 million layer. Based on this primary layer, the college has recommended, and we'll go to the full coverage on the next page in just a moment, the college did recommend to use Higginbotham, the current agent, as the primary firm that moved forward with going back to the market to fill out the rest of that 200 million coverage. So if you go to the second page, it shows you our current insurance, again, is with Higginbotham. What we're currently paying right now in premium is right under $3.8 million. That's for the full limit of the 200 million. The insurance premium for the full limit of the 200 million that is being proposed today is a little over $3.3 million. So it's actually 481,000 less than what we're currently paying. So if you look at the, if you're looking at the primary insurance layer, you know, when we look at this and the statute that we follow for procurement, we look at the best value for the college, because we have to look at what coverage did we ask for, and who provided us an insurance proposal with the coverages that we asked for. If they deviated from the coverage, then you have to take that into account also as to cost and what's the risk of that happening if, if coverage was changed, does it, would it impact us or not? So based on all that information that we had, the analysis, the college is recommending moving forward with Higginbotham. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that thorough report.
So the, the total premium is gonna be the 1.258 plus the 3.314?
No, it's the 3.3. And this is approximate, because I know, we, I do have Michael Swatner with Higginbotham here, he's our current agent. He is still diligently working on this cost, so if anything, it could, the 3.3 could possibly go down a little bit. But this is our, our cost as of right now. So no, it's not the two combined. The 25 is for the first 25 million, but the proposal you're seeing here is for the full 200.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions? Is there a motion to approve the staff recommendation of the section of Higginbotham for Dr. Babaly, second by Mr. Kelly? Don't even let me finish with the suggested wording. Yes, sir. Additional questions? We have a motion and a second. Additional questions?
No, let's have a vote, and then I'll make a comment.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Comment, Mr. Cruel?
Well, I don't know whether it's available or would be valuable in the insurance market to maybe try to aggregate with other, like CCISD and other school districts, to get one large policy for all of us?
There's not a co-op situation in really insureds, when you go to the, I know Mr. Swatner can speak to this, when you go to the underwriting market, they wanna go based off of you and your history. It's not a co-op type situation, like a risk fund, I guess you could say. So it's based off of the individual insuring body. And, and our history and, and our rates have, you know, it coincides, of course, it goes with what are the market conditions, but we have a very, I'm gonna say competitive rate and a good insurance program compared to some of our like institutions in the area, considering we're coastal.
Yeah. But, you know, sometimes volume speaks, you know, if you have a
Yeah.
whole bunch of.
And we are, we are part of purchase cooperatives in other areas.
Yeah.
We belong to all the bid boards and all the purchase cooperatives that we qualify for, and our purchasing department in other areas. This is a big-ticket item, but it, but we, that staff does follow that protocol where, where it's possible for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Swatner.
Thank you.
Appreciate, good to see you today. All right, we're gonna go back to Agenda Item Number Six, Discussion and Possible Action Related to the Faculty Recommendation for Tenure and Promotion for 2025-26, in accordance with our new policy. So your name is on it. Oh, we did, we did vote. We voted all.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading, I'm sorry.
We voted on, on the insurance policy. Yes. Now we're going back to number six.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Madam Regent. I was trying to get my notes lined out here, because this is a responsibility that comes from, from this, this chair as president of the college. As per, well, included in, in your packet was a memo that came from my office, as well as a supporting memo, coming from our Chief Academic Officer and Vice President of Instruction, Dr. John DeHauckham, with the recommendations of faculty, faculty applications for, for all of tenure for 2025-26, as well as, it was also in support, was, were copies of the newest, freshest policies that support what I'm about to present to y'all. So, yeah, as part of the 88th Legislature, ladies and, Regents and ladies and gentlemen, the Education Code was amended to authorize Board of Regents of the Institution of Higher Education to approve tenures, tenure decisions on the recommendations of the institution's chief executive officer, unquote. As such, the college moved forward last year to quickly amend its policies through, by way, and pardon me for reading some of this, but it's a technical piece that I really wanna cover the details on, so bear with me here, I'll move quickly. B.6.7.2.1.1 states that the Board of Regents of Delmar College, on the recommendation of the chief executive officer, may grant tenure. Also amended at the time, on the, on the, at the end of the 88th Legislature, was B. 6.7.7 granting of tenure. By May 1st of each year, the CEO of the college shall recommend to the Board of Regents those faculty members that have met the requirements to be considered for tenure. As such, was submitted in the, the memo, again, as mentioned, that was generated by our Chief Academic Officer. So as reflected, in April 1st of 2025, attached memo, like I said, the qualifications of the individuals recommended for tenure have been thoroughly reviewed and are ready for consideration by the board, and I, as your CEO of Delmar College hereby, recommend the granting of tenure for these individuals as submitted. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. And so we do have a list included in the memo from Dr. Hauckham on, on the individuals. Mr. Loeb, you have a question or comment?
I, I know you were, we had this on regular agenda, because you kinda, this is the first time doing this, and you needed to explain it. Is there any legal restriction on us having this on consent in the future?
I do not know that. I will ask that question in coming, in coming opportunities.
Okay.
But for today's purposes, I do not have that answer.
I make a motion to approve, and to the extent legally possible, that this item be placed on the consent agenda in the future.
Appreciate that.
Motion by Regent Loeb, second by Regent Avrith.
Appreciate that, both, both of you.
Are there any?
According on the two options, are these immediate professors and changing our procedure?
Yes, that is the motion.
Just to explain, my recollection was, our discussion earlier was to put it on the consent, when we talked about it before. I understand it's not on consent, because
Correct.
this is the first time, and you needed to kind of brief it and remind us, but I, I mean, I, I thought we had had a discussion about putting it on consent.
And I apologize, because I do not have that answered, otherwise I would have already known that.
And I know Augie's not here, so.
And, yes, that, that will be.
But for the first time, it does make sense to remind everybody of the process and why we've, we've not done this before from this table, but now we are required to, so.
Much appreciated.
Yes, sir.
And it's clear, our policy is, any Regent can pull something off consent
Correct.
if there's an issue, right?
Correct. Any other questions about the motion? Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Regents.
Thank you very much, Dr. Eskemia and Dr. Hauckham, for that work. Since we have already done our closed session item, we're gonna go straight to calendaring. And in the, in a couple of days from now, we're going to have the grand opening of the White Library, so I encourage you all to be there. It's a beautiful, beautiful place. Delegate does not have it on our calendar, but you do have invitations at your desk for the annual spring tea party and for a chocolate gala, both of which are being presented by Chef Claudia and our baking pastry students. I encourage you, if you have a sweet tooth or not, to attend both of those events if you would like to. They're, they're lovely, lovely events, and, and I think anytime that you can eat dessert and say that you're working on behalf of your constituents and the, the students and taxpayers of Delmar College.
Quality control.
That's, that's a wonderful thing. Our employee service awards are going to be at the end of this month, on Friday, April 25th. Board meeting in May, May 13th, and then our spring graduation on May the 16th. Do we have a commencement speaker?
We do. Dr. Wayne Morris, former football player for Delmar College, has agreed by popular demand to come and give an encore performance and keynote our graduation. We had, Jeff Olson and I had lunch with him last week, and he is gonna come back and share more stories. Just a quick note, you'll recall the recording at our retreat, our strategic planning retreat, extrapolated some of his words from his, from his comments eight or so years ago. Anyway, so by popular demand, Dr. Wayne Morris will be coming back, and he is most excited, shall we say.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that with us. All right, so with no further business, we will adjourn this board meeting at 3:34 PM. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, groundbreaking ceremony for the police station at Oso Creek is on April 14th at 10 o'clock.
Thank you so much. April 14th at 10 o'clock. I appreciate, thank you very much. That wasn't on our calendar either. Thank you.